All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board Candidate Night, co-hosted by Ben for Franklin and Franklin Matters. I'm Kobe Franjolo. I'm in my last few days here of being a town councillor as I close out my five years as a town councillor. Most of you know Franklin Matters, certainly your most trusted daily news guide on all things Franklin. But some of you might not know Ben for Franklin. We're a relatively new group around here. A few of our members have been able to join tonight, and we just wanted to put on a conversation with our three planning board candidates, just to get to know you better. Certainly introduce you to Ben for Franklin, but make sure that we record this and let the town residents know who they're voting for next Tuesday. Ben for Franklin is a community group advocating for a stronger, more welcoming Franklin. We're guided by the vision of the 2022 Franklin for All Report, and we work toward a town that's inviting, diverse, environmentally sustainable, and fiscally strong. Our mission is to support abundant and affordable housing options, walkable and vibrant neighborhoods, thriving local businesses, and responsible growth that secures Franklin's long-term financial health. As part of this mission, tonight's event is an opportunity to hear from planning board candidates about how they view Franklin's future and how they can work together to make the town more accessible, livable, and financially resilient for generations to come. We at Ben are always welcoming new friends and continued conversation. We hold our hybrid meetings every third Thursday at Franklin TV Studios, but you can also find the link. All more information, including our newsletter signup, is available at benfor, the number four, benforfranklin.org. Thanks to the candidates for joining us tonight. I'll switch to Steve for the first question.
Thank you, Kobe, and thank you everyone else for participating. Some of you I know from the interviews we've already conducted so far, but for the rest of the audience who don't know, let's begin by getting to know a little bit about each of you. So Franklin Planning Board certainly helps shape where and how our community grows through subdivision approvals, site plan reviews, and zoning recommendations to the town council. How have your experiences shaped your views on land use, housing, and development in Franklin? And what perspectives would you be bringing to the planning board? And given we've got, at least in my view, Mark, and then Eric, and then Bill, why don't you go in that order on each of the questions?
Sure, Steve. Thanks for having me. And thanks, Kobe, for planning this. I apologize if I was kind of a thorn trying to get this scheduled. So being retired, it's been very, I'm very busy. But anyway, to answer your question, I've been an associate member for two years, almost two years. And I think from that past experience, I've learned how the bylaws work and how they come into play. What I've also come to find out that being a lifelong resident here in Franklin, a lot of the developments that are coming to us as far as parcels of land, a lot of these parcels were considered not buildable back in the day, but now they're coming towards us, in front of us, that they present different challenges like wetlands and ledge outcroppings and setback issues. So I think those present challenges as far as the, when it comes to the planning board's point of view. But I've learned a lot in the past couple of years. I still have a lot to learn. I know some of my peers said it was going to take at least two years to get your feet wet. So I think also being a lifelong resident, I hear a lot what the residents are saying, and I know change has to happen, but I think we need to, as a planning board, we need to try to manage that development as best we can within the bylaws. Hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you for that. Eric?
Yeah, great. And thanks again to Kobe and Ben for Franklin for getting this coordinated, as well as for TC for getting this broadcasted. So where I started was I was an outdoors kid. I loved being outside. I was hiking. I was fishing. I was hunting. I was camping. I did everything outside. And that's the core of where I've centered myself, both personally as well as professionally. I went to graduate school and undergraduate school in natural resources, where I focused on how we can manage our lands better. Through my profession, I worked as a circuit rider in planning up in New Hampshire, advising into municipalities, onsite plan, and subdivision reviews. I've also worked on implementing renewable energy projects and programs here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And now more recently, I've been working in transmission development, how we can bring more transmission to improve access to clean, affordable energy for our communities. And so throughout that, I've really focused on sustainability. That's the lens that I would be coming at. It's not just looking at our natural resources and how we can preserve them, but it's about the economic opportunities and how we can make sure that we're a sustainable community that has a steady footing financially, and how can we grow our economic development opportunities in this town as well? Thanks, Steve.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Lee?
Everybody who doesn't know me, my name's Will Lee, kind of new to Franklin. We've been here a little over five years. We live in a historic home right across the street from Dean College on Martin Ave. And, you know, the neighborhood is absurdly walkable. We have everything we need, save for a large grocery store, within relative walking distance. A lot like Eric, I grew up outside a lot. We were a fishing family. And we used to, my father used to take us out to go look at vernal pools and look at things under the microscope. So I have a pretty healthy respect for the biodiversity that exists in our wetlands and how irreplaceable those can be in making sure that we live in a, you know, climate-friendly, you know, sustainable New England. A lot like Mark, I think I'm standing on the precipice of a two-year trial of getting my feet wet with regards to planning board issues. There's a lot that I truly don't know, and I'm going to have to learn relatively quickly. I said this to Steve last time, but I see a lot of the backend of the planning results on the Assistant Town Clerk in Hockington. So I file all of the planning board decisions, site plan review, zoning board decisions. And I, you know, I think that's so far what informs me moving forward into this. I don't want to go too far, but.
Thank you.
Okay, I have the next question. So the planning board's process can have real impacts on both residents and developers. Extended reviews can add cost or uncertainty, especially for smaller local projects that align with community goals. How would you balance thorough review with efficiency and clear communication in the planning board's work? Mark, why don't you start?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for the question. I think in the purview of the planning board, we have to take a lot of things into consideration, especially with the public safety of the residents in Franklin, also their welfare, personal welfare. But I think from my experience in the past two years, I believe, in my opinion, that the planning board does a pretty good job being efficient in how to get projects approved. I think what happens also is we have other commissions or boards that need to review some of these developments that come through. Once again, going back to some of the parcels of land that we have, they have challenges. They have wetlands. They have setback concerns. They, you know, so 40Bs have to be reviewed by the zoning board. So I think those also are part of the process that may create an extended process. And I think sometimes the applicants themselves, trying to prepare themselves before these boards, also creates delays, if there, for lack of a better word. But I honestly think we do a pretty good job as far as moving things along. Again, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, I really think it starts with the regulations. If you get your regulations right, it's straightforward. Projects come in, you review them against the regulations, and they're out the door. Where things start to get bumpy is, as Mark noted, where there's different exemptions to it or different impacts to it. And that's where we need to take a look at and how we can streamline the regulations to make them very clear to developers, what sort of development, where we want that development. And then it's open door, and it's fair. It's transparent to everybody. So that's the key thing that I think we need to do. I think we can look at some of our as-of-rights and look to get away from some of those special permits that might be needed or waivers, where we want it. And by codifying certain aspects as as-of-right, then you can make that process that much more efficient so that we can get the development that we're looking for here in town.
Thank you. Will?
Yeah, following up on what Eric said, I think we, you know, for my, I guess, well, I'll start this way. From my perspective in the clerk's office, we see, you know, developers get frustrated with the pace that things are filed, decisions are written and submitted to the clerk's office. And that can, that sort of bureaucracy to them, in a lot of cases, seems like a redundancy. But it's not. The clerk's office is the public records repository. So when those decisions are filed, that's when the appeals period begins and when the public can, you know, really look at the plans that are submitted and submit their, you know, misgivings on it if they have to. I think there's room, I mean, I'm sure, as far as I can tell, Franklin, the planning board is very efficient at submitting those plans. But I'm sure there's areas where improvements can be made in terms of, you know, keeping the developers and landowners up to speed on what the process actually looks like and how long it can actually take. I mean, there's a reason we have these regulations. We don't want to make mistakes, and we don't want to be short-sighted in our development and potentially, you know, pave the way for pave the way for construction that could be regrettable in a few decades, you know, if we're not looking far enough ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, question number three. New growth in Franklin has slowed in recent years, even as infrastructure and service costs continue to rise. A Ben analysis of Franklin property tax data found that compact mixed-use neighborhoods like downtown generate more than twice as much tax revenue per acre as the rest of town. What types of development do you believe best strengthen Franklin's fiscal health and long-term sustainability? Start with Mark.
All right. Thank you. You've mentioned, you know, that mixed use. I think we need to encourage, I think what we just did recently with the planning board, we made a recommendation to the town council as far as, for example, the Crossing District in regards to, you know, trying to make a balance between residential units and commercial units. We recommended that we increase the commercial area to encourage, you know, active-use businesses like restaurants, you know, art galleries of that nature. So I think those are very important, that we're smart about in doing that. Down in the East Central area, there were a couple of projects that the mixed use was very small. And I don't think that's really encouraging small businesses to come to Franklin. And I think that presents challenges for them in order to, to come to Franklin and, you know, kind of call Franklin home. But that would be my focus right now is, you know, mixed use, maybe changing some of the bylaws that would be more business-friendly than applicant-friendly, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, I think the key here is variety. We need to have a variation in our building stock and what's coming into town. That helps to diversify our tax base and our revenue sources for it. We need that here in town. We have a real issue in town with housing. When I was on the master plan committee and having conversations with folks in town, what I often heard was, "I don't know. I can't afford a house here in town. You know, I want to stay living here in Franklin, but it's just too expensive." Or someone on the other end of the spectrum, which is like, "I want to stay in town. My kids have graduated high school here, and I'm looking to downsize. We don't have enough housing in that middle stock. We have a lot of single-family houses, but we don't have enough in that middle area. So I think we need to do more to increase smaller homes, smaller lots, look at increasing our density in our core areas so that we can have growth in an organic fashion as opposed to a constant looking at these larger developments coming in." It's not to say that some of these large developments don't have a place in our community. I think they do. I think where they are and how they fit within the context of the land and the space are the important questions that we should be having.
Thank you. Will?
Now, my second job is in a mixed-use building. I work at Birchwood Bakery. And the second and third stories above that in that complex are all rented out by mostly Dean students. And I, you know, being on the Historical Commission, you know, I see that Franklin, you know, the entire downtown was mixed use. It always was. And broadly, American towns all across the country were made up of mixed-use buildings. You know, you had haberdashery in the front, and the family lived in the apartment above it and managed it. That was what built the United States. And I think we lost sight of it in the 50s and 60s with the suburban boom and building single-family, you know, little pink houses with white picket fences. And we left behind a lot of the, you know, housing that was for families that were just starting out. You know, newcomers or, you know, newcomers from outside the country or newcomers from inside the country. That's where they started, was those mixed-use developments. They ran a business out of the front, and they made their money up top. And then eventually, they were able to settle out somewhere. But we're, yeah, we've lost a lot of that. And that's the type of development that we need. It's the type of development that broadly needs to happen. I live in a pretty medium-sized house, and one of the strangest things when we were buying, it's like, I'll call it half a Victorian, you know. So I'm in a neighborhood full of really large Victorian houses, and we're in about a house half the size of that. And when our Realtor was looking for comps, she couldn't find any because most of the new housing that's on the market right now in Franklin is enormous. You know, there really aren't any houses that are my house size. So I can see the need for it. People are looking for these. You know, they're what people used to call starter homes, right, I guess? But I don't feel like this is a starter home. I feel like this is a place I could stay for a long time. But they're just, this is it. Like, I don't know of any other houses that really fit the bill for this. And if we're, you know, if we're looking in the long term, that's the direction we need to go in.
Thank you.
So I think I have the next question. So essentially, many of Franklin's older walkable neighborhoods, especially near downtown, could not be built under today's zoning rules. So updating those rules could help expand housing choices while preserving local character. So the question is, would you support zoning or permitting changes that make it easier to build smaller homes, duplexes, or townhouses in appropriate locations? And why or why not?
I'm assuming that would be me for that question to start off. I do. I do support that. And just recently, as I mentioned earlier, that, for example, the Crossing District, we did make recommendations that would, you know, encourage, would encourage changing some zoning to encourage both business, small business, and residential growth. We also, I support 40Bs in the form of homeownership. And there's one that's being proposed that's on Washington Street, and I think that's a perfect fit for our town where people are looking for the affordable aspect and also having a sense of, you know, a neighborhood type of setting. So yes, I do support that, and, you know, and, but again, we're in a town that we're not, we don't, we still have space available, but I think the space, we have to pick and choose where, what's appropriate and where those different developments would be appropriate to be, you know, viable to the, in a value to the town.
Yeah, I absolutely wholly support that. We need to protect our open space that's remaining here in town. Those open spaces have such huge value for us from recreation purposes, walking, getting outdoors, to stormwater management and avoiding costly upgrades to our stormwater management systems by allowing our natural lands to absorb the moisture that does come. And so it's really important for us to protect those. And the way we do that and the way we keep growing, the way we have that, is to increase density. And so the question then is, is where do we look at it? And how do we do it? And what does that, how does that fit within our town here in Franklin? As a part of the master plan committee, that topic came up a lot. And there's two real great recommendations that I think are near-term actions that we can take out of the master plan. Number one, let's look at 40Y housing here in town. What can we do? This is a state program that's emphasizing starter homes, looking at tiny homes and where can we cite them? Having four houses on an acre lot, identifying where that is in town. Let's have a stakeholder process. Let's talk to folks to identify where those areas are in town that we want to have these types of developments. That's number one. Number two, let's look at our single-family residential four zones. This is residential four zones that are right around the downtown corridor. It's been identified to strike the name of single-family homes and make it a general residential zone and increase the ability to have four dwellings on one property. That'll allow and increase that organic growth that I was talking about. But then lastly, I guess I'll hold there, but I do want to get to form-based codes, which is really important and really tied into both of those pieces. But I'll hold that for the next question.
No, right. I feel like, you know, much the same way that Eric does about a lot of this stuff. But I feel like tying ourselves down, you know, in just a single-family residential zoning or anywhere around downtown is severely limiting our choices, right? And if we can, like what happened with the Crossing rezoning, you know, you're expanding the choices that developers and applicants and people that want to open, you know, business owners and future residents can make about where they live and how they live. And I think it can be hard to focus on one thing like, oh, we need mixed-use housing. Oh, we need smaller houses. We need all this stuff. It can be hard to look at that and not see the bigger picture of, okay, well, we need more built infrastructure to come out to those places. Like, we need, I look at something like Seaport, right? And Seaport, with all the empty parking lots that it had even 12 years ago, what a poor use of land that was, right? Land that could be developed on and had nothing wrong with it. I look at the Crossing, and you see some of the same things. There's a right-of-way there where there's wide open land that can be built on in a smart way. The problem with a place like Seaport is the state in the city of Boston didn't build out any infrastructure to it. So you, if you want to get down there, if I want to go out in Seaport, great, I have the commuter rail right here. It goes right to South Station. But then I got to hoof it across the bridge, at least half a mile into Seaport. And if I want to go any further than that, it's, you know, it could be another mile, mile and a half. And there's not really, there is a bus line, but, you know, buses in the city, they hit traffic. Rail doesn't. So they didn't, they didn't think about while they had everything open, while they were digging foundations, that they could have put even a light, you know, trolley or tram or underground system out there. And they just didn't. Toronto did. I was up in Toronto about a month ago. And pretty much every new development they make, it's, yeah, it's a glass solist monstrosity like Seaport, but they built infrastructure out to it, and people use it. And they want to live at those termini so that they can get into downtown Toronto if they need to, to go to work. And we have some of that, like we have a commuter rail. But you look at something like, okay, we want to add our, add our housing and make ourselves into a bedroom community. It already is, but we want to expand that for people that work in Boston. You look, and you're limited because the commuter rail doesn't run frequently enough. And, you know, people, it's, it can be slow-going, and it doesn't, there's no express line. You know, it stops at Walpole, stops at Norfolk, stops at Islington. So there's, I get stuck on that. But I think we need to be flexible with our zoning so that we can make these decisions as they come down the pipe and give ourselves more options.
Thank you, Will. For question five, the planning board helped shape the new 2025 Franklin Master Plan, which envisions walkable neighborhoods, housing options for all ages, and fiscally responsible growth that protects open space and natural resources. Do you support the goals of the 2025 Master Plan? And how would you use your role to help bring them to life? And actually, let's mix it up and start with Eric.
Yeah, great. Thanks for mixing up that question. It's got to be hard being Mark, taking all the first questions there. So appreciate it. Yes, I do support. I was there. I was there for 18 months, listening to people in our community talk. It's a process. There's a lot of different perspectives that went into it. And overarching the vision for where we want to go is all right there. Now it's just our opportunity to make it happen. I already highlighted two of the areas where I think are near-term easy wins that we can start looking at right away on, and with the new town council as well, looking at how we can implement it. I talked about form-based code. This is something that I find so important. I got introduced to this when I was living up in New Hampshire, where, for those hopefully are familiar with New Hampshire, you know, the culture, the history that is there in those towns, it's the fabric of it. It's the same here in town. We want to preserve how our community looks, how it feels, and how it all fits together. That's how you do it through form-based code. Form-based code sets up specific design standards for how far back are the setbacks from lots? What is the building facade look? How does it tie in to a neighboring one? Do they have to use bricks? How tall are the buildings? It all fits. So let's have that conversation about what our community is and how it's important, and what does it look like? And let's start to implement that. I'd love to look at our downtown area and how we can increase housing, how we can make it more organic growth rather than always having more apartment complexes coming up, and how that can fit in, and what is that going to look like so you don't have those impacts that you have on neighboring properties as well?
Thank you, Eric. Let's go to Will next.
I definitely am on board with the master plan. I like how holistic it is. I like that it takes into account historic resources, you know, like we have, I presented last week to the town council about creating a local historic district. And I, I think that people knee-jerk at it. Jamie mentioned that there are going to be a lot of people that say or misconstrue what a local historic district is or does, but I think it's part of. It's not, it can be related to form-based code. I'm new to form based code. I like what I'm hearing about it. But you can use the existing character of this town to continue to develop and continue to invite in new businesses. It is not a zero sum game. It's not either we develop and we lose our character. It's, it's, we can develop and keep our character in ways that, you know, are innovative, in ways that are outside the box. And I think what we're looking for, there's a reason that people think of college as their best years, right? This is, this is related to Franklin, that people think of college as, ah, you know, it was so great. I went to class. I had everything I need right there. All my friends were there and my food was there and I learned things there. And if I needed to go do laundry, I could do laundry. If I needed to go outside and relax, I could relax. And yeah, because you lived in a walkable neighborhood for four years. And then you went back to wherever you lived and nobody was outside. We have Dean College right here. It's exemplary. It's part of that. But I think, you know, our, our focus on preserving open space is something that, you know, you can develop and not destroy the open space that we have. No stormwater management plan is ever going to match what natural wetland and vertical pool can do for managing flood zones. You know, that there's a reason things flood. We built them in places they weren't supposed to be built. Look at DC. I mean, a city should never have existed. But they reclaimed all of it and they fight floods, you know, and swamp reclamation every, every couple of months. You hear about, you know, pumping water out of the subway. Same thing with Chicago. But I think transportation too, like there's areas where we can improve. Like we just renovated the, the train station to make it more accessible. You know, we probably should think about, I mean, working with the GATRA and, you know, reinvigorating that stable line and maybe even getting some kind of transit to Providence. I feel like people would use it. Students would use it. You know, we're not that far away. And we don't, we don't, we used to have, you know, a railroad that went all the way to New York City, right? Went to Hartford and New Haven and, and beyond. We lost that, but there's things that we can get back that aren't going to rip up the rail trail. You know, we're not going to go laying track down back over the rail trail. But there are things that we can do that are innovative and, and they might not seem obvious to some people, but we, we definitely, when we're looking at all of these things, the master plan can look pretty heady. But I think we can package them and market them to people in the town that are skeptical as we look at future development. And I think that's something we need to be mindful of is how we present this stuff and try not to be so heady. You know, we might, this might look pretty natural to us, but to some people, they, they knee jerk. And, you know, it's up to us to sell it to them.
Thank you, Will. And Mark.
Thanks, Max. I think with, as a planning board, I think we need to promote various housing opportunities that's in the best interest of the town. I think both Eric and William mentioned, you know, preserve our open space. I, I think it's also, it's not just about building buildings. It's we, we need to try to build, rebuild a community and not that we're not a community. I think we've kind of drifted away, some of the character of the buildings in town have kind of drifted away from what I grew up with. And I'm not saying that's, you know, I'm just kind of being sentimental, I guess. But in addition, I think that we have resources here in town that, you know, we need to, areas that we can revitalize, aging properties. The mill store for one has come to mention that's going to be coming online. I think that's a great opportunity to incorporate again, residential housing and commercial. I think there's a talk about the, the rail trail and that could be blended in with that. And I think that'd be a great opportunity in the town. Another project that went online not too long ago was the, the, it was the Clark Cutler Manufacturing Building down, down on West Central Street. So those opportunities, we need to, you know, embrace those opportunities and for, you know, just to try to, that's what part of Franklin was about in the foregone era. But, but that, that's, I think, a lot of lifelong residents. That's what we remember and I think try to preserve those would, would be, I think that's part of the master plan. I think that's what we were trying to, try to accomplish.
Love it. Well, I promised we'd, we'd keep it short. So I'll, we will just have one final question. Get your last thoughts out. Although I'll say, you know, just personally, just speaking for myself, I think this is one of the most thoughtful conversations I've heard amongst planning board candidates and, and members. And the town could be so lucky as to have three thoughtful planning board members. So appreciate your time. All right, last question. Finally, a forward looking question. Franklin faces important choices about how it grows, whether we continue current trends or evolve to meet changing needs for housing, transportation and fiscal health. Looking ahead 10 years, what do you hope Franklin will look like as a result of the planning board decisions? And we'll go reverse from what we have been, Will.
You know, I wish I had a frame of reference longer than five years so I could look back 10 years and say, okay, what direction has the town moved in? From my point of view, from the last five years, I think the town's moving in a great direction for the most part. I signed a certain petition a couple of months ago and in, in favor of preventing a certain development that I'm sure everybody can think of, but probably not for the reasons that the petitioner, the people circling the petition would think. I, I think we, I think we have some projects on our table that are not in the long term, the most best cited. I think if we're really, if we really mean what we say we mean in the master plan, the town 10 years from now is going to have two, two vibrant chunks of downtown, one being the main street corridor and one being the Crossing. I, driving down Union Street, I can see that a bunch of those lots and a bunch of those right aways, I can see those being used and turned into something vibrant with respect for how the community has character and close enough to the train that people will actually walk to the station. Close enough to mixed use shops that people can get things they need at. Less traffic. I think we can do that too. I know that's a huge rallying cry for a lot of people is that the traffic has gotten worse. And I don't doubt that. It has gotten worse everywhere because more people are driving further to work than ever. But I think the town will have alleviated some of its traffic. I think we'll have, this is more on the state, but I think the T will be electrified hopefully in 10 years, maybe. It will be on the Reedville line anyway. And I think you'll, I think you'll see people out and about like you already do, but on a, on a bigger scale. I think even maybe, who knows, if Union Street is developed the right way, maybe we just shut down traffic to Main Street altogether and everybody's just out and about. Plenty of towns do it. It is possible. Maybe we shut down traffic to Union Street and the Crossing is pedestrian only. I don't know. I don't know. But it would be nice, wouldn't it? Other than that, I think we, you know, hopefully we still have our open spaces that we love. Del Card and the Dacey Fields and all that's Beaver Pond, all that stuff. People are utilizing it in a sensible way. And yeah, I think that's a broad stroke. Look at it.
Love it. Thank you, Eric.
I'm excited. I think there's such good fabrics and foundations of what we got here in town. And there's a lot of prospects for us. I think our downtown is amazing. I think there's even greater potential with it. What can, what we can do to have the increased stock? What we can do to bring in businesses down to it? Let's talk about creating more open access to the restaurants and having outdoor patio spaces to eat. Let's use up some of that parking space that's downtown that's being unused. And let's think about more creative ways that we could do it. I'm excited about our recreations that we have. We're already have such phenomenal recreation facilities in town, whether it's the ice rink or soccer fields or wanting to go out for a, a, a walk in one of our natural resource areas. I'm excited for Schmidt Farm. I think this community right here and us getting together underneath the barn out there and that was grown from food from the community garden there at Schmidt Farm is amazing. And I can see that happening in 10 years. So there's, there's lots of, lots of pauses that we need to do. We just need to take the steps. We need to have that connectivity. And let's have those conversations about where the development's going to be going. And let's put that, codify that into our regulations so that the developers can go.
Fantastic. We, we love some optimism at Ben. We also love some sentimentality. So Mark, don't be afraid of that. Mark, we'll kick it to you to close us out.
Well, Eric and William took a little bit of my thunder. I mean, I, I like to see opportunity with the downtown area and and revitalize that. I, I mean, we have, it's not coming, being on the other end of town, so to speak. And you see that there's a lot more people walking. We have the common, we have the functions at the common. All, all great opportunities for the, for the community. Preserving and enhancing the public, the open space that we have. I mean, we've great, done great strides as far as preserving all those. Again, just reminiscing, you know, we, we've lost a lot of, a lot of the open space due to the, the development in the nineties. And it's very important, I think, as far as the community goes that we, what we have, we, we embrace those. Traffic is a challenge and I know that the central corridor is a challenge. And I'd like to see if, if, I know it's mostly state owned, but some kind of plan to adjust that, I guess, for lack of a better word. But I think we're going in the right direction, you know, again, being a lifelong resident, I think, you know, all the, all the boards and the town council, I think they're doing a great job and, and promoting a lot of, a lot of things that is for the benefit, benefit of the community.
Love it. Well, again, thank you to all the candidates for your thoughtful responses. And truly thanks to everyone here tonight for taking the time to be part of Franklin's civic conversation. The choices we make about land use, housing, growth are going to shape our community for decades to come. And public engagement is essential to getting those choices right. On behalf of Ben for Franklin and Franklin Matters, we thank you for joining us. If you'd like to stay involved, learn more, support this kind of community dialogue, please visit benforfranklin.org. You can sign up for our newsletter or attend an upcoming meeting. Have a great evening, everyone. Thanks to GATRA candidates for stepping up to serve Franklin.